Pledge allegiance to the flag, United States of America, and to a republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with a freedom and justice for all.
What we're gonna do on your new business, add, accept a resignation of three board members from the water authority. So that'll be on your new business, we're gonna add them to it.
Make the motion now because of that new rule? I'll make the motion to add acceptance of resignation for the second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Motion carried. Okay, approval of the minutes from monthly meeting September 16th, 2021. Do you have any questions about the minutes from the September 16th, 2021 meeting? We move on to budget meeting held on October 6th, 2021.
I know.
Twenty twenty two.
It's right on there.
I know, you have it right on the budget.
I know.
Okay.
I know.
Okay. Just correct it. Okay.
You know, it's right on everybody else's.
Oh, I have.
Yeah, I got it before I started making copies, yeah.
Okay, we're gonna start with visitors' comments.
Hey, I'll make a motion to approve the minutes of both the September meeting and the budget meeting of October 6th. Second motion.
All in favor?
Aye.
Motion carried, accept both meetings. Listener's comments, Frank?
Yeah, I just wanted to point out one view here that I didn't quite appreciate. But when we vote ourselves on other boards, this is what happens. So I'd probably appreciate if you want to talk about people's boards or call their people's lawyers, that you should, you know, maybe talk to the board first. Instead of calling your lawyer and trying to get information. From now on, what I'll do is just call your lawyer instead of me asking you a question. So that's not a good situation.
Who called the lawyer?
Supervisor.
Who? Is this because of the ones that resigned? Yeah, I did.
This is from our lawyer because of outside interference and he wrote right on it because of the supervisor. So I don't know who called, but.
I got an email from them.
Email saying it was called.
No, I didn't contact them, they contacted me. And I said, just don't waste our time and money. That was my answer. I threw the email out there, you can see it.
This doing state supervisor. Oh, okay, okay.
Yeah, if the interference.
Outside such as township supervisors.
All you had to do was ask me.
They were informing that, in their opinion, that the board members that resigned were still board members. They sent that to us.
I understand that, I don't know.
We didn't reach out to them, it was vice versa. Was your secretary saying, according to our attorney, the board members that resigned are still board members until their places have been filled?
I know what they said.
No, in the past that you resign, you resign. If you, if your term expires and nobody fills it and you're willing to stay on, we've let people do that over and over and over again. But once you resign, you've resigned.
But you know what I mean, if you've asked me, I'd have told you that same sentence.
Oh, no, I agree, but this came from the, it came to us through the attorney and your secretary.
Well, I'm saying, that's just from him, it's because of the interference. There was no letter or anything responding from the township.
Right.
I mean, that's, that's what he wrote.
No, he sent an email from them. I said, as past precedent, exactly what I just stated. When somebody resigns, they've resigned. If they want to stay on if their term ends, that's a whole different story. And then, then.
Yeah, I know how that goes, but I didn't know if you guys called them or emailed.
No, and I don't know if you called them, your board called them in order to get that billable information out to us.
I didn't call them at all.
Right, I think somebody was messaging them, called about board members.
All I'm saying is I got all the feedback, that was one of them. So I don't like anybody going over my head, you know what I'm saying?
No, that's true.
You wouldn't like it if I went over your head and went to your head.
Yeah, we didn't, we didn't. They, they came through us and I said, here's what we've done in the past.
Because I would have answered the same way, I don't know how it works and.
Yeah, there was no decision for us to contact.
Yeah, I don't know, I'm just giving you what.
They always say that's first, okay.
Okay.
Okay, anything else, Frank?
No.
That's good. Carol?
According to your meeting last month, item C said that the Caladonian repairs were done and the inspection of the bridge was scheduled for around October 13th. I was on the phone yesterday for almost two hours. I talked to two different women from Pendott in the state and they were under the impression it's hurting, but it lived up there. And I told them there's over 20 homes up there.
They're under the impression nobody lived up there?
Well, they thought a few people lived up there, but they weren't really worried about it. The one lady told me.
This is Pendott, you were saying?
Uh huh.
Okay.
And then she said about, I said, well, there's over 30 camps there and there's over 20 homes up there. And she informed me that they have 50 days to get back with you from the inspection, from the date of the inspection, your date said 60, but she had told me 50. I don't know which is right, but that doesn't matter. They also told me, wholesome said, that they were very disappointed with the inspection and they didn't know what was gonna happen with it, it's still up in the air because they had cited six different places that needed repaired and there were in fact only two repaired. Both of them told me the same thing. They said not only were the, only two of the six, none of the four hadn't even been touched as far as they could tell. And there was metal that showed corrosion of white crystals that should have been cleaned off and painted. And they said it had not been addressed. And they really didn't know where it was gonna go from there. They said they probably would leave it open with a one lane track. They didn't know how much they were gonna give us as far as weight limit. These people up there, as well as us, have been waiting for stone. Some people have been waiting for cement trucks. The fire trucks come up there wanting to call the forest on fire, they shouldn't have caused that road.
Well, they're township affiliated.
But I'm just saying literally.
Township liability.
It's at 11 ton. So, you know, what do you, and then we've got fuel truck coming up. We have a big tank, so I don't know if that fuel tank's gonna be able to go across. But every one of those camps up there on Laurel Run, we're looking.
Okay, we did do our group assignment. Yeah, you, you just said Pendott's telling you this?
They tell me that, the one lady.
Okay, I was down here when they did the inspection for about a half hour in the morning, talking to Mr. Gatto, I'm a nervous person. They were doing whatever they had to do. And then I asked him, I said, how soon will we be notified? He said, you're looking probably first of the year. I said, really? So how's Pendott know? They're telling us, they can't tell us for two and a half months and they're telling Pendott this need.
When I talked to the first lady, she referred me to a second lady. And the second lady was the one that told me, and I should have put their names down by myself.
Now, is this, which office did you call? The district?
I called, I don't know.
Clearfield or Ridgefield?
Your secretary gave me the first one.
I believe her Kimberly Cars Keller engineering lady that I've been dealing with that says about the subsidies, that they won't contact us to get the money for what they're doing.
She wants the repairs.
We did everything.
All the repairs they were all.
She said that, that lady for sure was one of the ones that said, I mean, they both told me that the repairs that they had requested were not done and they definitely did not seem.
They were done with?
They said there were six places that should have been repaired and there were only two repaired. She said, I have the paperwork right here and I don't know if they're gonna pass it.
Do you have the paperwork?
I have, well, I have.
Whatever it was.
Whatever you had to do, we did.
All I'm telling you is that all these people have been waiting to get their driveways done, to get sidewalks put in. We can't get cement trucks, we can't get rock in to work on our roads. And it's caused a big concern because there's so many homes and stuff up there. We want to put more stone on our road, we can't get the guy to bring in triaxle stone. He's got people coming in with little trucks with stone to repair his road. It's a pain in the hind end. And they, and they said, well, they're gonna try and put a rush on it. I said, how are we supposed to deal with fuel truck that refuses to go across there because of the weight? She said, well, we're all gonna try to rush it. I said, that's, try to, don't help.
Who's, what was her name?
She didn't get it.
I didn't get it, I did talk to this one here for sure. But then she had given me another name.
I'll make out call. But like I said, what we were told, we had to do, and that was a timeframe. We had to do this in what?
Before October.
Yeah, we did everything what we had to do right then. So this individual, if they're saying, well, there's other things, but.
There are additional repairs.
Yes.
The two that were identified as the emergency repair are the ones that we did. And we only had until October of this year to complete them. The additional repairs obviously are in the works as well and we have money secured from the county now to do more than just these emergency repairs. We're actually gonna redo the, as much as we need to do underneath, plus mill off the top, repave the top, reseal, change the center joint. There's a lot of work to be done, they gave us 87,000 of the county. But, okay, two years ago, the county changed the engineers that inspected bridges. The prior inspections, and you're more than welcome to come here and look at them, notified, had none of these notices on them. The new engineering company came in, said, oh, here's what's wrong, we want it fixed right now, drop it down in weight, drop it to one lane. It's a new company with a different opinion than the last company. So we've got two years here, we've got, we're a little outside of the years we've been dealing with this. But we've secured money, we've done the two emergency repairs that they called for and now we're gonna continue on next summer with the rest of the repairs. These two emergency repairs, according to our engineer and Keller at the time, should get it back to 16 tons. Which all it was before it went down to one lane, it was only 16 tons. So a triaxle loaded or bigger trucks were still unable to cross it.
Well, that's not what I was told. And I, and I was told they were distracted because they had specifically listed six and only two were down.
Okay, right. Well, that may be Pendott's take on it, but if that's the case, when we hear that, then we'll have our engineers explain the whole thing. Not only to Pendott, but to us as well, if that's the case. But we weren't allowed to work on this ourselves, we had to have an engineer.
I do understand that part of it. And I, and I said to her, whichever one it was, I said, I don't understand if you gave them a list, why, why, first of all, why did they have to wait till October? I said, you've got people up here that have waited all summer long for you. And she said, well, I'm sorry, but it's gonna be a while more.
Well, the only reason we couldn't get it done earlier in the year was because of the rain. I mean, there's, we had to get a machine under there to do the work. And the water level was too high. Once it got down to, you know, a lower level, we weren't gonna get in there to do the work. So, and there's only certain months of the year that they allow you to work in the street. That's a whole other, that's a DEP problem there.
Just like Jeremy said, I think for my first or second year, we went to Ridgeway, went to the other engineering firm, and we, we got all the books and it states, okay, you're, you're in this, correct me Jeremy, this tier you have, you're at this number within so many years, you have to do this. Then like I said, you know, we were on the guidelines, everything we had to do. Then all of a sudden, when Keller, Pendott, but Keller did do the engineering, all of a sudden, all this other stuff was wrong.
That's the county that actually chooses the engineer. But, yeah, the change in company changed the, the.
I think we were on board from 16, 17, and 18, everything was up to whatever had to be done to it. Then like I said, when Keller took over and they found all these issues, and like I said, we corrected what they told us we had to do right now. But like I said, I was disappointed.
And they gave us, I think, 10 days to close it down to one lane.
No, it was four hours, it was four hours.
Four hours?
They called me at the end.
Four hours, and they're gonna give us 60 days to tell us whether these repairs are worth it or not. You know, it's, I understand your frustration, I know I talked to a couple of different of the fuel oil carriers last year, propane, firewood. We can't give anybody permission to cross it. If they go through it, their insurance will pay for the new bridge. And I explained that to all of them. Fridays was taking a smaller truck with a partial load of oil on it to get underneath the weight limit to get it across there. The same thing from one of the propane dealers, I don't remember which one. Because they were just calling randomly to me to ask how do we get in.
Well, we get a thousand gallons, we have a thousand gallon tank and they have to bring the big truck out. And they don't, they're not capable of bringing it over the way it is right now.
Right, if it, if it's overweight and something happens, they would be liable.
That's what they told me. So if we run out of fuel between now and when they're done carving around, tough shit.
Well, I'm not pushing for one company or another, but I know Jeff's bringing it over there in a smaller truck. I don't know how, you know, it all works for you, but it's, our hands are tied with that.
Yeah, we, yeah, whatever.
I would advise you though, to get rid of Brian Teed's trip for engineer. He's not a bridge man. He's totally not a bridge man.
Yeah, well, I mean, it was done by their bridge department, the engineer.
Don't matter, Brian's coming down here, he knows nothing about a bridge. He'll get you in more trouble with your plan.
Pendott also suggested that, I said, well, I'm gonna go to meeting, find out what's going on. Because there's too many people have been waiting all summer, trying to be patient, and we're literally getting screwed now. But they said to mention that they don't think that bridge is gonna hold up more than 10 years and that you should be looking for grants now because it's gonna take.
We are, yeah.
It's gonna take a couple of years if you have the money to put a decent bridge in there.
We applied for grants last year, of course, didn't get awarded. And we have attempted to put that bridge on what they call the tip program, which is federal money. Eight years ago, you were still here, I think, and we put it on, tried to get it on the tip the first time. They said, oh, according to the inspection, it's fine. So we tried right now to get it on the tip again, and they said, not bad enough. So it's not in this bad a shape as whoever's leading you to believe it is because they won't take it to even, when you put it on that program, it takes about five years to get your funding. And they won't even put it in on the list.
That's what she said, she said it's gonna take a good part of that 10 years to get the money.
Yeah, and they, but you first have to be approved to be on the list and they won't even approve us to be on the list because it's in too good a shape. Their own words, not mine. So the 87,000 was supposed to give it about a 20-year life expectancy if we can do everything that we set out to do with this 87,000.
They told me you want to get 10 years out of it, no.
That's probably because their regulations are gonna change.
They're gonna get new engineering for like five years too. And they'll say, well, it's good.
Or bad.
Well, you ought to find out Jeremy, how much you can gain on that bridge by taking some of the surface off the top, weight wise, to take it down. Because I think there's about five inches of top on it.
Right, well, that is part of the plan was to actually take it down to as close to original as we can without, you know, so mill that all off and then just put like a couple inches back on.
Well, you can take it down to the original concrete.
Right.
Yeah, and within like a half inch, they recommended.
Well, actually, you can take it to the concrete because there's a, there's a, there's a bonding agent for concrete. You can take it down, take the spout off and then just put a little less than two inches of concrete on it and back, bring it back to, bring it back to stand. Now, that's a 6,500 PSI concrete, so.
I know what they recommended so far from Eves again. And if there's any issue with Eves, then we'll review that with somebody else.
That's what we did with Spring Run.
Right.
But it wasn't on our dime, the coal company paid for it when that damage was done. But that's what they did on the Spring Run Bridge, they took that down, cleaned it, pinned it, put that bonding agent on and then report it. And I don't know if you had any trouble with it since, have you?
No, it's in good shape right now.
Yeah, that's been probably a good 15 years ago.
So unfortunately, we don't want, we don't want the problem either. And we understand where your comments are.
It's frustration, it's another company and people wanting to get the road fixed and stuff.
Right, I, I understand it. And I know that, that people unload a piece of equipment, drive it across the bridge, drive the truck across the bridge, reload it to get to where you're, I mean, people have been creative about it. We appreciate that. And there's a long way around, you know? I've told, I've told every supplier that as well, you know?
And you know what suppliers want to go the long way? That back road is so bad.
I know.
And that's another thing, weren't you responsible for that road from where currently is out?
No, we gave it back to the state, so they're actually, they're working on it now.
They're fully in control of that.
Are they supposed to be in there?
Yeah, they said within the next, they're gonna start basing it, I think they did start basing it some this year. But they said within three to five years, they'll have it looking like the rest of the bike. So it'll probably end up with a nice diamond.
You can't, there's people that won't go on it.
Right, yeah, we started that process before COVID hit and then that stopped it at standstill and we finally got.
It's been a year and a half.
Was it the month of bill or two months ago, it finally, finally.
It was the month of bill.
So it has been sitting in Harrisburg like that on somebody's desk, it wasn't in their office for a year. It's been a, but we're, that should be, that'll be really nice when they're all done fixing it up, you know? But then you're probably gonna see more traffic down the road because the tourists are gonna travel.
Not with the way it is.
Yeah, well, like I said, we did everything we were told to do on it.
Yeah, because that, wholesome told me that there were six items that were supposed to be repaired and there was only two done.
Anything else?
Can I say something about that? You call in an officer, can you ask the person there, they will pull up the whole program. Okay, it says like, there's six items on this bridge that need repairing. You need two items as an emergency repair to get the bridge open again. So you do those two items, okay? Those other four items at that date and time don't do the darn thing. But that's all you can see is the initial write-up, what the bridge needed six things done to. And in reality, okay, the supervisors are probably in compliance with the proof that they did to get the bridge open. But she doesn't understand that, that the other four are in the works, but at least two were an emergency repair.
This, this, yeah, I mean, that's, we did what we were told to do. And like I said, maybe those other four items could be within the next two years to be done too. They might come down tomorrow and say, you have to, November 1st to do this, like they did on the first one and told us, it has to be down here on Pendott to get, you know, the, what do we call it, everything else down there, which Pendott gave us, you know, those markers, whatever they call. I said, we're, we only do what we're told.
I think we did appreciate that we repaired it on our, on the bike road there. The base here, that stone on that hole was really an asset.
Wash away today.
Good, Carol, Parry?
Yep.
Gentlemen, I don't know your name.
My name's Colin Sudlock, I, I own a camp out Laurel Run Road.
Okay, awesome.
I was simply interested in the condition of the bridge.
Oh, okay.
Today I was up at Dulula, and I'm trying to get them to run a 10-ton truck across the bridge with two ways come. And they can't do it. They said they could put eight ton on a 10-ton truck, but with delivery charge, I'd be wasting my money, you know? I just won't do it. So, and the members of the, on that road, we are waiting for the bridge to be repaired so we can get some stone on the road, more stone on the road.
Like I said, all we can do is let.
Yeah.
Phil?
What's here, I just want to talk about the, why don't they take the cones off or the, yeah, the 10-ton lightweight one, I take the cones, so two cars people are buying, you know?
Well, they told us we had to restrict it to one.
That was a question we asked from the beginning, because 11-ton weight limit, why, why can't really use two lanes? But they said less chance of something happening without cars passing, that's Pendott.
You know, the weights in the center compared to, you know, okay, what's a car, three tons? Two and a half tons, so you get five tons at one time. They told us, you, this is what we had to do.
Not only two cars passing, but maybe two or three cars are going this way, another one coming that way, they were doing the scenarios. And I said, you should hang out here for a while and figure something out with traffic. It's, it's their rules, that's the way they set it up. We argued that point from the time they, they made us put those cones on, and you know, right before winter, and we told them, they're not gonna be there by the end of winter. I mean, they were smashed, busted, buried over the bridge. We had guys going down there every time we thawed out and setting them back up. It was kind of pointless to us too.
So actually, when the block circle goes up, they're gonna be over the way too.
Yeah, but it's our bridge, so if it fails with that's going over it, then we have to fix it already. If it fails with somebody else's truck going over it, their insurance will have to pay for it. That's why you can't get a stone truck or a fuel truck or something overweight to cross it.
Same, same as a fire truck, or tanker goes, or any of our engines. Something happens, fire companies and the entity is a township, so.
Yeah, we're not gonna stop fire companies from crossing the bridge.
I know, they can.
You know that.
I know that.
Anything else?
No, I got my concern with the bridge.
Okay. Jim, anything more?
You know, I do have a couple of things. First of all, I'd like to ask, why are the mass access to the water authority?
What's, what's this now?
Did you just say that three people from water authority resigned?
Yeah, back in September.
Well, it was back in September.
I think it was, yeah, I think one of the things is.
Have you replaced them?
We put one on.
Yeah.
Yep.
I, I was gonna ask you, Rick, did you, could you tell me how many FTEs, PTE hours are required to officially run the sewage authority for a week?
Sewage authority?
Yeah.
Are you talking full-time employees, part-time employees?
Right, the hours, the hours required.
Okay, so what do you want to, how many are required to run it by law? Or what we, what do we currently have there, is that what you're asking?
Yeah, what I'm wondering, okay, is because of, all this, all this talk about the consolidation of the two, of the two outfits, the two authorities. You know, you think you would want to know, are you overstaffed, are you understaffed? Both the water and sewage authorities? So you could make, determine a, is it gonna be cost effective? You're gonna save money by combining services. Can you eliminate employees or do you have to, you know? I was just wondering if someone could tell me what the required number of hours to do an efficient job? Maybe you're overstaffed, maybe you're not.
I don't, I wouldn't say we're overstaffed. I mean, currently at the water company, there's two full-time, two full-time workers, no, no part-time workers. Correct? At the sewer authority, you have one full-time, one part-time.
Well, it's not full-time yet, Jeremy, it's gotten.
Probably a little of that though, I mean.
Uh, right now, they're both, uh, right at the moment, you're both 30 hours.
Okay, but Corey should be moving up, right?
Uh, yeah, he just got his paperwork, day before yesterday, Tuesday.
Okay.
And, but he won't get his, he has to go through all the rest of the stuff with Holly. And then whenever she signs his license, she can sign it anytime, but DEP doesn't meet until about the second week in December. So at the earliest, he's probably gonna be first of the year as a, as the operator if he picks everything up that we're considering.
Full-time with part-time.
Well, he's gonna end up being full-time prior to that, Rick.
Okay.
Okay, but he's.
He has to go through the channels.
We have to go through the channels, yeah.
But there, Jim, right said, it's, yeah, I don't know, are you understaffed or overstaffed, Frank?
Actually, I think it should work out, working good. But it's, it's working very well right now with, Corey's gonna be going full-time. We have the work to, to put him on full-time and that's where we're at.
Like Frank, you said, on the water, everything's good, so.
Yeah, we're, we're not having any issues, I mean, we're actually.
That answers that.
Full license operator and one partial.
Anything else, Jim?
Well, you know, let me preface what I have to say here with the fact that, I have to say that's not by Nancy at all, okay? Because I see she's probably one of the finest members you can have on your, on your board. The only thing I want to say is this, okay, is that the supervisors over the past couple of years have looked to consolidating the two boards. And the only way to do that is have favorable votes. But when you, when you put a paid employee on one of those auxiliary boards, okay? It just seems to me that that's this borderline asking, okay, to make kind of an ethicalization. And that, that's just my opinion, okay? Like I said, it reflects not on Nancy because she does a wonderful job. But it, it does look to me like the supervisors themselves, okay, put themselves in a position where that could lend itself to be an explanation.
You mean in regard to voting?
No, 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 not at all. No, 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 not at all. What I'm saying, it has nothing to do with you, Nancy, okay?
I know, but I'm trying to understand, what, what?
What I'm saying, what I'm saying is that, yeah, it's like you're trying, that's like they're trying to find a vote, okay?
A vote where?
For consolidation. Okay, do you get a majority of both boards to consolidate?
We made that decision, right?
Oh, well, that consolidation has to go by money. I mean, and it's gonna be brought out in the forefront. They're not gonna do something that's an outrageous price. I mean, I don't have that much influence.
No, the thing about it, okay, is that, uh, would both boards have a majority of vote, okay?
But no, that's not how it's gonna happen. There's not gonna be any vote about it. They're gonna see what the money part of it is, right, guys?
That's.
They don't have anything to do with it. All they can do is appoint people to the board.
Period.
Period, that's it. They don't have anything else to do with that.
I'm saying about the merger.
Yeah, it's up to the two boards. It's got nothing to do with.
It's up to the two boards.
No, not really.
Yes.
No, no. I'm not gonna argue that. Okay, we, we had workshops, the water and sewage had workshops. I mean, it's been an ongoing for how long?
Waiting for the price.
Yeah.
I know, we're waiting for the price and what it would cost.
Okay, do I get to say my comment yet? Am I next?
You're in line, Nancy.
Okay, I'm here representing the recreation board. Okay, we had spoke a little bit before about, uh, making great use of the Sportsman Building in Burn Down. And when I talked to the rest of the board members, they were, uh, pretty much in agreement with that. So we would like to be able to have one of the supervisors accompany us or give us a key because we would like to go up and look at the building first before we make a real final decision. And then we also would like to know how it would benefit us as an organization and also the township as an organization. I mean, we're willing to put in the work, but we would probably wanna reap a little bit of the benefits also. Uh, because we would be managing that building, we would be renting it, you know what I'm saying? We would be collecting funds for the rentals. So I would think it would only be fair that we might get a small.
Yeah, so.
Feedback for that.
Ray, but the, the rec board was considering fixing up, cleaning up, trying to get the, the old Sportsman Building back.
We have the money to.
A rent estate for activities. They, they just asked if that would be something that they could pursue and how, again, now you're asking, how would that, how would that benefit both parties? The township and the recreation board would be the same. Yeah, so that.
And then the utilities are in there also as, as a question also, the utilities for the building. But, I mean, first we'd like to see it so we know.
Right.
If it's even feasible.
Right, I think that's the biggest thing I think, you know, is doing the company. Does anybody have a problem with looking into it, looking at it?
I got a key I took to Sportsman there months ago to look at it.
So if you wanna accompany us or give us, give me the key to take them out, so I have to see when they're all there.
How many girls are on your board? I mean, get a hold of me, I mean, you can do that, that's no problem.
So you would wanna go with us?
Yeah.
Okay.
But we can, yeah, I'm sure we can, depending on what it is, we could all go up with you, any questions or?
Cause I have, you know, four women to get, that's available and.
Well, I mean, if it's gonna be hard to get them all there at one time, you could always, uh, give the key.
Yeah.
Yes.
Go up at your leisure with them and then come back and talk to us.
Yes.
We don't have to be there with you, I guess.
Yeah, that's no problem.
There's nothing in there of any value, so.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay.
That's fine.
Uh, there is a swat hammer girl and there is Jessica Duel also is on that board.
Penny?
And Penny Benzel is on the board.
Yeah, I know Penny.
Yeah, I mean, we're good with that, yeah. Anything else until we get around?
Yeah, that, that's all I have to bring up.
Julie, Linda, Keith, uh, gentlemen?
Steve Gay.
Chris and Steve Gay.
Actually, Steve. I was here for the bridge, but I just wondered, that stop sign on the Calum and you pipe, oh, he hasn't had on camera. Cause it's Calum and you pipe from five-five-five all the way over.
We had that discussion a long time ago, you remember?
In the winter, it's gonna be harder to stop with that.
I know, I, we all agree down there.
Hey, it's just like the sign over on Redwood, where you have to go to the right, you, you know, if you're going right, you don't have to stop. If you're not going right, if you're going left, you go back, if you have to stop. Pendo tells you where you have to put the signs, is what it is. And the reason, their answer was because it's a straight-through affair, thoroughfare to, to the end, that's why there's a stop sign on coming down to him. It's not our call.
Right, we, I remember many years ago, that was, that was an issue, but again, and the one on top of Redwood is even worse cause you're, you're like, it's like that time when you have to, if you wanna go straight, you know? So unfortunately, it's not our call.
It's a lay of the land.
Yeah.
Anything else, Steve?
Good.
Joe?
Yeah, I have, uh, questions about the Calum and you pipe bridge also. I've been talking about this now for several months. It's been ongoing. Uh, I even went down and looked at the bridge myself. I got out, walked down over the bank into the creepy area when the water was low. Looking through these new beams that they put underneath the bridge, and I'm not sure where they're at because you can't see any new beams that's been put under there. And with the labor costs, what, damn near up to ten thousand dollars already on repairing this bridge, and I don't see nothing done. And also on the top of the bridge, the, the side rails, the side facing the upstream area, there's a bunch of rivets pulled out. The, the bridge itself looks like it shifted or whatever. So, uh, when are they gonna put the new rivets or bolts back in, and then have some welding done on it? And then these guys changed their mind instead of just bolted. I think that was what the beams, the beams are like thousand dollars a piece for these twelve-foot beams.
They're not beams. They weren't like an I.
Not an I, you never. You just, uh, C channel, whatever you wanna call it.
Right. I think we've explained this to you a couple times, you must know, get in there.
You'll see, there're two pieces of C channel sandwiched over the I. You can't see them when you're under the.
This is why you don't understand, cause you never stop talking long enough for the explanation.
Where'd they hide them at? Where'd they hide them?
They're inside the I, they're on both sides of the I beam. There's a bottom flange of the I beam. We were in a bucket in the loader all the way up twenty-one feet, twenty-one feet. So if you could see it from the ground, that'd be good for you because I couldn't see it from the ground while they were working on it. The only way to see it is to get up in the basket.
Can't see it.
Right, you have to get up there. Oh, it's, it's there. We got pictures of it all. Anyhow.
Just try and wait it to.
Just try and.
Yeah, the other thing, two or three guys drilled them two or three-inch diameter holes in, and I see here is a bill here from a dermit for a pipe for the drainage. Why didn't you just put plastic in? You never replace them again now, instead of putting metal pipes in.
Call Pendo and the inspector and they'll tell you.
Yeah, there's a lot of concern about this. The citizens are in an uproar and they want something done. We're gonna have to start pounding on a table or you get somebody's attention.
We did what we were told to meet to specs. Maybe your new, maybe your engineering firm is different from Calum's, I don't know. We did what we're supposed to.
Well, by the sounds of things, this young woman up here said that she talked to one girl and that girl sent her to another desk and on and went down the line, so nothing seems to be moving here.
I can't, we can't regulate who answers the phone, what they.
Yeah.
I mean, we, we have no control of that.
Now, you start calling government offices. If you only make two interceptions on the phone, you're doing pretty good. Is this, well, Steve's wanting to call, I'm just listening in.
He's told us.
Is this a, a township bridge or is it a Pendo bridge?
It's a township bridge.
Is it?
It is, yes, but.
But you said, earlier before, you said you had Pendo take it over?
No, 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 that's what I said.
The pipe, from above Cardinal Road out to the Clearfield County line, not Pendo, DCNR, DCNR took it over. They own all the property on both sides. They requested to take it back over. We have no legal rights to stop them from taking it back over when they own all the property on both sides. If you owned all the property on both sides of Garder Hill and you wanted it to be your private road, you win in court, okay? That's just the way it works. Plus, we, we were more than happy to give them that piece of road because it, it's been in terrible shape for years and we throw money at it and it gets us nowhere.
I know Lawrence Township had a section of that road also, and they, uh, received some reimbursement from the, uh, DCNR or whoever it was. And these guys haven't got a dime. Uh, we just wanted to hand it to the keys.
Yep, and. Stay here, township. Handing the keys to a nineteen forty-five Rust bucket.
Yeah, Lawrence Township done it differently and they were reimbursed for that section that they gave up. Figure that out.
Maybe they own, maybe they own some property along there. You've gone out through Lawrence Township, there is a private property out there. Through Jay Township, it's all state forest and both sides of the road.
Both sides.
We'll get it out there, bad time deal.
Anything else?
I'll come up with something later.
Let's, Steve, to the visitors' comments, Jim.
I'm just here for the bridge, which concern, we live up there and getting deliveries and so on, and it's a concern.
Okay. Bridge too?
Yeah, and I know about, with about four or five years, when we tried to get a house put up there, it was modular home. The first thing that come out the mouth is, you pay to get the bridge inspected. And I said, I'm not sticking no more money into anything.
They wouldn't bring up mobile home.
Yeah, it was Saint Mary's Home.
They wouldn't, but, yeah, you, but you still.
Yeah, you know what, the guy that delivered our home, parked out on the road and he wasn't even running, then he didn't have where else to do it.
Yeah, they told us.
He was, they go out here and then he brought them.
Trucks were a lot of, you know, block trucks, you know, and you ain't bringing a whole.
They wouldn't bring it back, so we had to inspect it and I said, I'm not paying for it.
But they, but they.
Screwed us around.
How long was this too?
That was before.
How many years ago?
Before ours.
Yeah, that was before, it was about four or five years ago.
They come up and watch out.
Yeah, and they said, we're not gonna do it unless you pay to get them inspected.
And our.
And they got, they got people out of the state, and the state come down and said, you're not taking, not gonna cross that bridge, nothing.
Nobody ever contacted, why didn't you contact?
Because I figured I'm not sticking no more money into anything.
Yeah, it would've been free for you to call us. I mean, prior to this, prior to this, uh.
Paid a permit.
Prior to what you see there now, there are loans and everything.
There was no heavy equipment going across there, no escalators to burn down. They said they had to take them to the river if they did. Then they're talking about river damage.
They didn't have any restrictions on it up until, a couple of years ago, they lowered it to sixteen ton.
Yeah.
I don't know if that was when that was, when it was lowered to sixteen ton, it could've been.
Big ton.
Now it's eleven, obviously in one lane, but prior to being sixteen ton, there, there were no restrictions on it.
Yeah, but it was sixteen tons and they weren't gonna have to side up the bridge and they weren't gonna bring it, you know?
No, they would not bring it.
And, uh, I went down and I.
But you had no issues when you got through it?
We had, no, they brought.
That was what I.
They brought my daughter over, but that was sixteen dollars and that's right. That was before all this. Sixteen, yeah, until sixteen, and they didn't give her any trouble also, they knew that's a great word, you know?
Did you guys ever go over, look through the archives? I never did this year, man, I mean, I did a lot of our stuff. Did you ever go over, look through the archives of what bridges belonged to the county?
I can't.
Well, listen, the only reason I'm saying that, Spring Creek Township, you remember when they had to replace the bridge in Spring Creek Township? And there was all this controversy about it. They went back and went through the archives and found out that that bridge actually belonged to the county. That's where they had, they had, you gotta go, well, you gotta go back clean to the beginning Elk County and then you gotta go over to Clearfield County because the archives showed claims that it's Clearfield County to find out when that bridge was put in. I'm just making that as a suggestion to you because you may find out that that bridge belongs to, it may belong to Clearfield County. I don't know how long it's been there.
Thirty-six.
Thirty, thirty-two or thirty-six.
Thirty-six.
Well, it's not, it's not long in Elk County, if, if it doesn't. And I'll tell you, it's a lot of digging to find out.
No, I think they used, uh, they got the steel from the. The way I was told is, uh, the, uh, Calum and you Bridge Company built that bridge. It went out in the flood and the old, the original, and then they, a group of people called the Calum and you Bridge Company built the bridge. And they got, they got, they got railroad steel. That was what I was always.
Well, I always heard that that bridge came from where, where the railroad crossed going before you go up to the pipe.
Yeah.
Where that went across there.
It, it very well.
It may have, but that still doesn't mean it doesn't belong to the county.
That was a working bridge, wasn't it?
I don't know, well, I don't know if the whole thing was or not.
Irregardless, the county.
I'm just giving you something to check.
The county paid for Spring Creek's, uh, maybe, cause like you say, it was theirs, but the county did, does have that thirteen money. That's where we're getting the eighty-seven thousand for repairs. Um, that's all they could give us right now, but that was a, that covers all, like I said, should give us fifteen or twenty years of life on the bridge.
Oh, no, I'm not arguing that. I'm just giving you something to look into.
Replacement cost is two-point-six billion now on that bridge.
Yeah.
That's, that's good.
Hundred and eight feet.
I'm just, I'm just throwing it up there. I'm not telling you, is it or isn't it, but it was a possibility. But you gotta dig into it. You gotta go back and look through the records at the county to find out what bridges are on the county dog.
Okay.
Yeah.
Thanks for the info.
No question.
Okay, good. Okay, can we move on? Uh, approval of bills.
Jay Duncan Sales, what's that?
That's, uh, the place in Clearfield, boats and nuts. Would that been for?
That was, that was some of the bridge stuff.
The bridge stuff, yeah.
Oh, okay.
Yeah. Do we have any questions on the bills?
I had a question.
Yes.
In room repair, what kind of work did we have done for a year, seven thousand here?
Yeah, you can get a copy of the invoices.
What, what?
You can get a copy of the invoices if you'd like.
Well, I mean, it's not top of your head what broke on this machinery we have here, which.
There's three different, that's three different invoices going all the way back to December nineteenth, so off the top of my head, one of them was the GMC, it was kind of a major overhaul in the GMC.
Yeah, that's, that's the one that's over almost two years. We got the bill from it.
Oh, really?
Yeah, cause I question why it took so long to get a bill.
Did that have engine damage or something?
Nope, that was, I think they rewired everything and that's what it was. Part four.
Exhaust.
Right, you can, you can come in and learn about the question.
Put the records, request and Jamie will show you the invoice.
Yeah, and one more question here on the Jay Township Fire Department, Rick, this, uh, fire relief for eighty-one hundred bucks, what's that all about?
That's your foreign fire insurance, that when, you get it every year. Foreign fire is like, say, uh, I'll just say, okay, Harry and Carol, you have insurance through a company that's out of state. There, that's how you get your money in, from out-of-state insurance companies. That's called relief money, foreign fire insurance.
Does that mean if they had their house on fire and the bridge?
No, this is insurance you pay your premium for. It's your premium, your policy. That's what we, foreign fire insurance.
Never heard of that.
No, it's been around long before we've been here. It comes to the township and Jamie issues a check to the fire company. Benazet does the same thing.
This, that's paid to Jay Township volunteer then?
It comes to the township.
And then.
Then the township sends a check to the fire company.
Look at the deposits on the treasurer's report, you'll see the same figure under fire relief. It, it's a pass-through, so it comes in the mail, Jamie has the deposit and then write the fire company the check.
One more, Rick. Uh, I, I, I know what it is, but at the Saint Mary's Water Authority fire, is it still, uh, the fire hired it's out on?
Robin Road.
Robin Road.
Yeah, yeah.
Boy, that bridge hasn't changed in years.
Nope, it's a separate quarter, right?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, I think, that's not bad.
Any other questions on the bills? Or a motion?
Make a motion, pay the bill.
All's in favor?
Aye, aye.
Motion carried, pay the bills, total sixty thousand, seven thirteen oh five. Correspondent, oh, I'm sorry, Treasury Court.
General fund bound out of August sixteenth was a hundred cents, still adding six hundred twenty-three dollars, sixty-one cents. Bound out of October twenty-first was a hundred forty-five thousand, two hundred ninety-three dollars, forty cents. State bond bound out of September sixteenth was a hundred seventy-three thousand, four hundred twenty dollars, two cents. Bound out of October twenty-first was a hundred. Oh, I screwed that up. Oh, I screwed that up. Bound as of October twenty-first, was one hundred and eleven thousand, thirty-seven dollars and twelve cents. Plague bound as of October twenty-first, is thirteen thousand, nine hundred and ninety-one. Capitalated, bound as of October twenty-first, was a hundred twenty-one thousand, six hundred and sixty-one dollars. State fund bound as of October twenty-first, forty thousand, six hundred and twenty-five dollars. General fund CD bound as October twenty-first, eighty-five thousand, one hundred and ninety-five. Um, deposits for the month were thirty-one thousand, three hundred and eighty-two dollars and eighty-four cents.
Any questions on the treasurer's report? Can we move on to correspondence?
Please, I'm sorry, I'm sorry, I'm sorry, I have a Facebook page, I have email on October second.
What's, uh, what's a game on Facebook posts, what is it?
He emails me a copy of what he posts on Facebook.
It's like in a letter format, he sends it to the township.
Like an email?
Who's Jim's scriptwriter anyhow? Is it Jim now? I mean, I, okay. So he requests that information and it's an email or was wait basically, or is it a?
Yeah, it's an email I printed out. Just come at me.
It just.
Yeah.
I never saw anything like that on.
Oh, he's got them on there every month. He sends them here every month.
Yeah, but I don't, I don't.
Okay, uh, from road maintenance, equipment maintenance reports. Okay, any questions on the road maintenance or the equipment? Can we move on, open business? Uh, flood issues, curtsy run, anything?
Nothing's new, but we did get the fully executed agreement with the fish and boat. They finally got their twenty-seven signatures on the paperwork.
They were on there today?
That money is, yeah, I saw them over taking pictures and stuff, that money is fully secured. Um, still waiting on the accompanying grant, we need to get ahold of that kid. Have you tried, what's his name?
Josh Gray.
Right, Josh Gray. Has anybody tried to?
I see the road. I'd be ready to go by.
We catch them, and we have till summertime, obviously, but if we catch them and give them a sign, if that, one way or the other, if it's not gray, then, then Leonard said that we could go out to move the project down, so preparation for the project will need to have it pinned down by before spring, I don't know what's there. So, we can see if Josh is gonna commit to it or not, I don't know. But that's all I have on it for now.
Okay. Uh, moving on, combining water and sewage ports, which there's a, we had a discussion already on that, any comments? Okay, Calumney Pike Bridge, which we did have a discussion on that. Orders updated.
Uh, there was nothing new this past month, really. I, uh, followed up on some of the fines that have been issued. And, uh, there's another person I'm going to have to take back to the magistrate.
Okay.
So, uh, that's all I have for this month.
Okay, thank you. Okay, uh, greater municipal bid.
Do you want me to do this one?
You want to do it?
No, I put it on, yes, probably, then, um, it, the top bid was forty-five hundred. They did not need the reserve.
Twelve thousand?
Yeah.
So we're gonna just keep it on?
When did that come down?
Yeah, today at like two o'clock.
Two o'clock?
Two or four o'clock.
Wasn't there a six thousand dollar bid before?
The first time out, what was the top bid?
I don't understand.
Six thousand dollars?
Oh, that way, they goes ahead of us.
Six thousand dollars, you go up.
Oh. We're not. What do you wanna do with it? We can lower the reserve.
Yeah.
But we're not gonna lower it to forty-five hundred.
No, no.
Um, you wanna lower the reserve and put it back out for another month? Right, it's free, I mean, it doesn't.
It doesn't cost anything, so.
Wrong time of year, we shall agree.
It truly is, I mean, it's not like anybody's looking for it right now, so, uh.
Wait till spring.
Yeah, wait till spring.
Wait till spring?
Do you want me to run them now? I mean, it doesn't cost anything if they don't need a reserve, it just kicks it. I mean, do it every month, if you guys want to.
Yeah, just rerun it, it's not gonna cost anything, rerun it, but.
Do you wanna drop it? To ten maybe?
Yes, I mean, that's where we're at, we were at twelve.
Twelve now.
Okay. Yeah.
You got a motion?
I make a motion, lower it to ten.
You got a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
We're gonna lower the reserve to twelve thousand on the grade.
Mm-hmm.
They said, don't cost nothing around it, so.
Did you say twelve?
Ten, we went from twelve to ten.
I think you said twelve.
Yeah, it was twelve. It was twelve, we moved to ten, okay.
Call it a snowplow.
Yeah, twelve.
Heavy-duty snowplow.
There you go. Okay, the twenty twenty-two budget, we need a motion to put the twenty twenty-two budget out for public review.
I'll make it.
Over.
I'll make a motion for public review.
Yes, all those in favor?
Aye.
Motion carried to put the two thousand twenty-two budget out for public review. Okay, going into new business, this pension allocation. Motion approve the ten thousand dollar payment to the pension management firm.
I'll make the motion.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Motion carried to put ten thousand dollar payment to the pension management firm.
What was that for?
That's the, we have it every year. Pension for the, uh, full-time employees. Twenty-five hundred per full-time employee, and it's also a pass-through, it comes in from the state.
Yeah, that's, uh.
And then it goes into their individual pension account.
How long do you have to work to earn a best thing?
Five years, I believe, is.
I'm not young enough.
That's cool.
Yeah, it's not a defined benefit, it's just a long sign.
A long sign, yeah. What's the cost in township, Jeremy?
Doesn't.
Good. Comes from the state, goes to the township, sounds like that's an expensive one. Yeah, that's, that's, that's a good one.
Yeah.
Okay, uh, we're going for the subdivision.
Donna, that's my first name. It's gonna be Jordan and Jeff Friday, a little lot. A little right here.
What?
One man.
Yeah.
What is the parcel from Donna Rushnot subdivision going on end of Carter Street, probably is.
Yeah, right behind that, there's that, it's just a little piece of land.
It's gonna go to Jeff and Jordan Friday. Four, six. One point two acres.
That's, uh, yeah.
One point two acres total, compensation, what?
Is that a burn down, right?
Yes. Yeah, it's up in the end of Carter Street, both, yeah. It's according to this, it's one point two five acres, it's Jesus. Sam, to them.
I'll make a motion to approve the subdivision.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Motion carried during the subdivision, Donna Rushnot, uh, Jeff and Jordan Friday. Okay, assessment permit. Uh, okay, it's from James Antonio, three, three, three Cherry Avenue. Uh, description proposed, he's putting a shed. Twelve by twenty-four, no foundation, no basement. No water taxes on that. Looks like it's just gonna be to the right side, it's house facing south.
We marked the water line and the sewer line.
Seventy, yeah, we're gonna have sewage, yeah, seventy. Far.
It's too far away for sewage.
Any questions on that?
Nope.
Make the motion to approve his assessment permit. I'll second it.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Motion to approve, uh, James Antonio putting a shed on it.
I'll make a motion to approve the Antonio shed.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Motion carried. Okay, we added to accept the resignation of the three board members. And that was done in September fifth, right?
Right, and that stems back to that same.
That one?
Position we had earlier where their lawyer, who's no longer your lawyer, feels that unless we formally accept the resignations, they're not resigned.
Yeah, one actually was on eight twenty twenty-one. One was on eight one twenty-one. The other one is on eight two twenty-one. Motion accept the three resignations.
I'll make a motion to accept it. I'll second it.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, motion carried to accept the three resignations from the water board. Okay.
We're gonna fill the position.
There's no new applicants.
So, do the applicants go away after every meeting?
No, they're on file, but they're on file.
But they were denied last meeting.
Did that?
Yeah, that's.
No, they weren't denied. Our vote was muted, no one said a word, they did not deny. Or, and, and, no, if you made a motion and died from a loss of a second, then they were denied. But you did not deny them because nobody said a word. They were, you were muted the whole walk. So that's not, that's not a denial.
I really thought the decision was made enough to fill the other applicants at this time.
Am I not right in that, Jeremy?
Uh, if nobody wants to open the vote, then, then I still think it dies.
If that's a lack of motion.
There's no motion.
No motion.
There can't be a second without a motion.
That's right, that's what I said.
Irregardless, at this point in time, no, we're, we're, we're.
If nobody, okay.
There's enough turmoil there right now, we don't need more. We wanna see where things are going over the next, like that. Who knows, month, two, three. But right now, water board's under control, sewer board's under control, we're, we're not even muddying waters anymore. We're still trying to figure out what this consent order has to do with all of it, so.
This is not from a personal standpoint, this is from?
It, no, it's not, I mean, if people were in there doing a good job, we would never have to sit here and have arguments about it. That, that's the standpoint, and it's the, it's not the first time it's happened, it just keeps going round and round and round, and we're tired of it. Getting to that point, to where we have to go through a consent order with the DEP and lawyer fees and new operators, I mean, we've had this conversation, we repeat it over and over again, but if somebody's doing a good job, great, that's the purpose of it, to keep us out of it, but I'm sorry that two consent orders and lots of money later, and, well, sixteen employees or something like that. We had a list though, about the joint meeting over that same tenure period is, is, means that we have to get involved. And, and so it's not personal at all, believe me. We don't sit around at night thinking, oh, boy, what did I do for the water company? It's not that way.
I was just trying to say, you know, we, where did the, uh, more appropriate area, if you said, like, we have three petitions for the appointment to the water authority. Uh, they decided that, uh, the best, had, right now, this person there in one, rather than put the names out there for the, for the whole county to hear that there, there's no way, they're, they're gonna vote for them in any, in any means. That's kinda embarrassing.
Well, I think they have to.
Yeah, I mean, they applied, so we always go over the names that apply.
Yeah, but you can do that in executive session.
No, no, it's not one of the things protected under executive session, so, that you can't do. So, they're not, it's not an employee.
I was, I was under the.
It's a public, that's a public position when you hold a, a board position. It's a public, you're a public official.
Absolutely.
Just, just like Keith and Freddie both said, everything's going pretty good, right?
Right now.
Okay, that's good, I hope it gets better.
I hope it does, too.
Yeah. Okay, motion for adjournment.
I'll make the motion.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Very.
Thank you.